Okay, well, welcome, everybody. Especially my mayor's youth advisory council. Welcome all of you and parents that are here. We're very excited about this group. They've done such an amazing job. So I'm going to just move on with this presentation, correct? And then we'll start our other meeting at seven called Roll Them, correct? June? We don't call the roll now, okay? Okay, very good. I wanted to make sure. Okay, and is that mic over there is workable, right? All right, so what I'm gonna do is, I think you know this, is call out your name, and then it'll be time to give your presentation. And then, and here's your mic. Well, after you've finished, I will give you your certificate, and we'll take a picture, okay? Sound good? Everybody's ready? Okay, all right. The first person at the top of my list here is Henry Rosenzweig. Henry? Have the mic.
Thank you. As you all just heard, my name is Henry Rosenzweig. I'm a senior at Clayton High School. I'm gonna be attending Wash U for pre-law, undecided official major. Over, over the year at MIAC, I followed the Board of Alderman. I was here for, you know, meeting once a month. It was a lot of fun, so I'm gonna go over a few of the major events and topics, but you all, of course, already know these because you were here. So ones that I found the most interesting were, there are a couple of the like, diversity and like cultural inclusion initiatives that were approved. The Osage, the Osage Tribe marker in Oak Knoll Park and in other parks. The Black for the historical Black Church. I thought those were very interesting. And then also, when the municipal judge came in and spoke, I found that really, really interesting. He's personally interested in law, pre-law, and like general government, regional and federal. On top of that, I think it was really, really very interesting to see how you handled kind of a more pressing issue. I think the Wash U, the Wash U land plan where they were looking into utilizing some land for new athletic fields, it was really interesting how that was handled when there were a lot more people here to speak, and there was more of a direct presentation and like a, a very immediate issue because there was the short timeframe, and there was all the light, not licensing, all of the, like what the land could be used for, issues that, so I think that's super interesting. I don't really have a ton that you all could like improve on or recommendations. I think that overall, it went very well. It was generally very smooth. A lot of the procedure kinda just went through nicely. So, I mean, I think there was a lot of good discussion, but maybe in the case there were more people outside, maybe a touch more discussion sometimes. But I think it was overall a really wonderful experience. I want to thank all the people on the Board of Alderman, and the mayor, everyone else who is here for all the meetings, and then of course, the sponsors from MIAC. Thank you.
All right, here we are.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, you did a great job. Thank you so much. Okay, next would be Spencer Pompion.
Hi, I'm Spencer Pompion. I'm a senior at Clayton High School. Going to be attending St. Lawrence University in Canton, New York, playing tennis there. And my idea, I mean, I've been doing, studying Parks and Rec in Clayton, and my idea is that we should propose a new hydration system in Shaw Park's field five and six, and over board, but the new softball fields are being created because I feel like when I was playing sports, I was playing soccer, freshman fields like five and six, I didn't feel like I had easier access to water when I was playing. And I feel like, think now that we have a lot more emphasis on youth sports in Shaw Park, I think that now that would be a greater focus for the years ahead and for much longer, so. Yeah.
Here we go. All right. Thank you very much. Okay, next one is Dasha Arnold. And Dasha, I understand that you are gonna give Violet's presentation too. So Dasha Arnold, and then she's gonna give Violet Edmondson's presentation.
Do you want me to get Violet's then, just so it's like up here already?
Yeah, yeah, that sounds like a great idea.
Hello, I am Dasha Arnold, and I'm a junior in high school. I was part of the Equity Committee. I think that they did a really good job with being engaged in our community and inspired me to learn more about our community as well. There was one meeting that I went to that stood out to me and stuck with me. In the meeting, they talked about bench warrants and about the court system and how to make things as fair as possible. For example, if a cop pulls someone over for speeding and then tells them they have a court date in a few days, they may not show up for certain understandable reasons. At the meeting, the judge who had been talking said that if that happens, he likes to give the person the benefit of the doubt and give them another chance to show up. If they continue to not show up, then he'd want to learn why and maybe, and why if maybe they aren't able to attend because of a valid reason and they aren't just skipping the court dates on purpose. So I found that very interesting to learn about. It isn't easy to try and meet everyone's needs because each person is different and has different needs. But the Equity Committee has shown that they try to understand the needs and challenges of each individual and those individuals interact with the government, including the police. Another thing we talked about in the meeting was community service. The judge might order someone to do a certain amount of hours and prove that they did the required service by getting a supervisor's signature. But then comes the actual time for the community service, and some people can't easily complete the hours because they have work, enough kids, and can't step out for an hour or two to complete that. In comparison, missing a bit of community service in the grand scheme of things isn't as bad as missing work and losing your job that you need to support your family with. The judge also talked about how he tries to help the people and see what can work for them. I think the Equity Committee is doing a very good job with everything, and the only recommendation I would have is just to keep thinking on behalf of the people and think of what's fair and best for the community, as the Equity Committee already does. I loved getting to learn more about the Equity Committee and what they do and how they help our community. I think that Equity is a very important part in any society and plays a big role in having good community. I think that our Equity Committee is focused on helping the people of Clayton and is making a big difference for everyone and trying to do their best. I also found the meetings to be very interesting, and it was interesting to learn more about my own community and how people help our community every day. Thank you for all the work and guidance you have done. Yeah. I'm Violet, I'm a junior, and I followed the Parks and Rec Committee. I was most surprised how much effort and research went into every decision. One thing that was discussed at almost every meeting was the Live Community Master Plan. There's a plan that the committee was organizing for the space that used to be the ice rink. There were many proposed designs, including a variety of elements. These plans were explained and discussed at nearly every meeting. This surprised me as it seemed like such a simple decision to make. But as we talked more about the different benefits and problems with the designs, I realized how complicated it truly was. It took months of planning to decide on which plan they would, they will go with. And there were even more work to do with getting all the different parts and permits approved. I found this really interesting, and it made me realize how complicated the decisions committees make are. They are not, they not only have to consider the people's opinions, but also practical issues such as buildings and maintenance costs. Coming to these meetings and seeing the decisions making in action and given, has given me a greater appreciation for the effort that has gone into the community projects. I can't say I have many recommendations for the committee, and it runs really smoothly, and they work together really well. But I think that having more meetings in person would encourage the public to share their ideas and issues, which would be helpful to consider when planning big projects such as livable community master plan. Since the Parks and Rec Committee in general are, is geared towards creating nice, comfortable spaces for residents, I think it would be nice to see residents get more involved. I also would like to simply thank everyone involving with MIAC. Jenny Abels and Ms. Keerly have been so great about planning meetings and helping us learn. And having the mayor herself there was really amazing since she was so willing to answer questions and explain the process that occurs behind the scenes. I also, of course, would like to thank everyone on the Parks and Recreation Committee for being so welcoming and helpful towards me and all the work they do to make Clayton such a nice place to live. And my, MIAC was truly a great experience that has helped me understand the way our city government works and the amount of work and effort these amazing people put in. Thank you so much.
That's you, let's take our picture. Hi. Doing that, and do you want to give this to Violet? Shall we send it to her?
Maybe.
All right, next would be David Lynn. Hi, David.
Hello, everybody. I'm David Lynn. I'm a junior at Clayton High School. And throughout the year, I followed the Sustainability Action or Sustainability Advisory Committee. And I think one of the big impressions, or something that I was impressed by in this committee is how significant and how big their plans are for Clayton as a whole. Because it's not just putting more recycling bins everywhere in order to save the environment. It's things like having a more walkable community. And so they brought in a graduate student from Wash U named Dylan Colbert, who talked about plans for maybe increasing biking and making it more accessible and making Clayton and Wash U more biking permeable that would allow for like a more livable community and a more eco-friendly community. And another thing that I was impressed by is because of this big vision that they had for the future, they had a lot in their work. And so that meant that they assigned a lot of real-life work to me and the other member from MIAC, Oliver Maher, that also served in this committee. And so they actually assigned me and Oliver to work on an anti-idling project. And essentially, this consisted of doing some background research on the harms of idling. And then we're currently preparing a presentation that we're eventually going to try to present at the school board that would allow for anti-idling signage to be posted on school district property in order to stop this just from happening and affecting small children and the students and making the community a better place overall. And so my recommendation, not for this committee specifically, but maybe for other committees, is to use their MIAC interns in a similar way and give them like real-world projects that they could use to actually make positive change within their community and also to be more involved in their committees besides just watching the entire meetings every single month. And of course, just to end, I'd like to thank Mayor Harris, Ms. Abels, and Ms. Keerly for running and sponsoring MIAC, and then the chairman of the SAC, Ms. Grossman from Ward 1, for allowing Oliver and I to make real-world positive impacts in our community.
Okay, next Nicholas. It's been, well, I've never been able to pronounce it right.
Vinini.
Vinini.
Yeah.
Okay, got it. Thank you.
My name is Nico Vinini, and I'm a senior at Clayton High School. And my plans for next year are to study neuroscience at Wash U. I followed the Equity Committee throughout the year. And the thing that impressed me the most from the commission this year was that they wanted to include a bunch of different groups into the community and caring about every, like, caring about every people, group of people that lived in the community, both historically and right now. And example, an example of this was the recognition of the Osage community that, and they wanted to pay respects to the Osage Committee, or Osage Nation that I'm pretty, at Oak Knoll Park. And it just impressed me that the committee wanted to respect every group living in Clayton and that has a history here. I think that the top recommendation for the committee would be to try to advertise their efforts and achievements to the Clayton community more. Because if I wasn't in this community, or in the, if I wasn't doing MIAC, wouldn't really know about their thing. And I talked to a lot of my peers and parents about this, and they didn't really know about this. So my top recommendation would be to like advertise their, what they're doing more. Um, thank you to all the advisors for their work and guidance in making this MIAC program a very meaningful one that has taught me a lot.
Okay, all right. Okay, now we have the other Nicholas. Thank you.
Yes. Hello, everyone. I'm also Nicholas, and I'm a junior at Clayton High School right now. And as you know, I've followed you guys, the Board of Alderman. And I've seen several interesting things. For example, I saw Five Iron Golf come here and get a business permit, and I thought that was just interesting because you guys basically approve everything that happens in Clayton, or most things. And I also saw a lot of building projects, and the main thing that I saw was Wash U. When Wash U came in, a lot of the community members were really engaged, and they wanted to come. There are about 50 people here. And what really stood out to me is that people care about their community. But my recommendation for you guys is that some of us students, like me and like my peers, don't know about the Board of Alderman and don't know what they do. So if we could advertise with the high school about what you guys do, then we could have a more engaged and more effective community that comes to these meetings and really goes through and shows the community what they want. So I'd just like to thank the mayor, I'd like to thank the committee, and I'd like to thank Ms. Abels and Ms. Keerly for a great year. Thank you.
All right, now, they've got cameras on both sides. Here we go, we're over here now. Okay.
Thank you.
Good job, thanks. Okay, Oliver Maher.
Hi, my name is Oliver. I'm also a junior from Clayton High School. And I, with David Lynn, looked over the SAC or Sustainability Advisory Committee. So my impression of the committee was that it was super detail-oriented. I didn't realize all the little things that they worked on, the things that might have gone unnoticed, like an idling sign or another EV truck that was added to Clayton's fleet. But all of these little things have so much paperwork and so much effort that goes behind them. And I was really impressed by all of that. I didn't realize before entering the Sustainability Advisory Committee that so much work went into these little things, and it really amazed me. They worked on things like Project Dark Sky and the GDA, or Green Dining Alliance. But these different things actually incentivize a lot more activity regarding climate change. And I think that was really impressive. Unfortunately, there was a lot of paperwork behind it, which happens. But there was so much effort and so much happened throughout every meeting. We went over like 20 different things every meeting. It was so fun to learn about all of those things. And as David already explained, we're working on a project to install anti-idling signage at Clayton Elementary School to make sure that people idle less and less emissions are produced. So if I were to come up with a recommendation, my recommendation would probably be to just use more mediums to like inform people about all these different things that are going on. I feel like, for example, with the Green Dining Alliance, maybe like some social media awareness could help. With the Green Dining Alliance, what they do is like ask people to connect to the owners. But I feel like social media posts could really, for example, or just any sort of media could help bring more light to all the action that's going into helping climate change. So lastly, I would like to thank everybody. I would like to thank Ms. Abels, Ms. Keerly, and Mayor Harris, along with Sustainability Advisory Committee for letting me and David watch. Thank you.
Let's take our picture. Andrea, can all of these guys follow us on Facebook, on Instagram, and whatever? They can, right? So in order for them to find those links, they would just go to the Clayton website and act, and you can follow everything that we do, and you can spread the word among your friends. People who follow you, they might start following it too, so that would help, right? All right, Lance Sheets.
Ron, my name is Lance. I'm a senior at Clayton. And I've actually elected to not go to college in favor of doing flight training on my own and then hopefully getting an online degree in something just a little more useful for future plans. I've been following the Parks and Recreation Committee for the last half a year or so. And I'm really surprised by how thorough they are with everything. A lot goes into the meetings that's kind of, I feel like, unnoticed. There's so much planning that people do, as well as after the meetings, to come up with decisions and to go through what it actually takes to get these things done and to connect with the people that can help get it done. So my recommendation for the committee is to update the volleyball courts that we have. They're, I think we all know that they're there, but there's a lot of things that could be improved on so that the community actually wants to use them as opposed to not so. Like, there's not many lights there. Soon as it gets dark in the fall, early spring, nobody really wants to go in the middle of Shaw Park. You know, it's just a little dark. So with that, I'd like to thank everybody, Ms. Harris, Ms. Abels, and the entire Parks and Recreation Committee. Thank you.
First, Saad.
Hi, everyone. My name is Yahya Saad. I'm a senior at Clayton High School, and I'll be attending Harvard University in the fall. You might recognize me because this is my second year following the Community Equity Commission. And I would say my largest impression was the sheer amount of collaboration that's necessary for everything they do. Almost every single meeting, we had a guest speaker, whether it was someone related to the local office for immigrant access or it was someone who worked in the court system or some other equity-related effort. It was very interesting to hear from all these different people and really see the committee trying to reach out to them and listen to their input to guide their actions. In terms of recommendations, I have two major ones. The first one would be to continue to make city resources more accessible. I know in the committee, we talked about making bilingual signs and things along those lines. But I think the Board of Alderman could also consider maybe revamping the website and making other things like that more accessible to a wider array of people. And then my second recommendation would be to look into more recognition regarding the Wydown area and the Philippine exhibit in the 1904 World's Fair. I think that would be a great opportunity to do something similar to recognizing the historically Black church or the Osage Nation and just pay some remembrance to sort of what happened there. And so lastly, I'd like to thank Ms. Abels, Ms. Keerly, Mayor Harris, and the entire Equity Commission for everything over these past few years.
Now that we are recognizing the Philippine Village, we're doing a sign just like the Osage or the Black church and all that. Got that going on. It's, there'll be a dedication sometime in April. We have the date. Eighteenth, eighteen, at 10:00 AM at the site.
I'll be there.
Okay, so they're in Poric.
They're not here.
And, okay, and Ben Coster are not here yet, but they are coming. Porch, which is all good. So we, that's it for all of you guys. And so what we'll do now is we'll just. We'll put them there. Okay, great. You guys will come up here. Yeah, what's a good name with Kelly Portman? I would like to say, you know, that you guys are really the heart and soul of the organization of this group. Without you, I'm sure it wouldn't be nearly as much fun or nearly as effective. I just can't say how important it is, your follow-up and your, and follow-through with getting the kids organized, but also, you know, I'm sure encouraging them. And sometimes a little bit of discipline is required, but not much, not much. And so we're glad that you guys have given so much time to this effort. I think it's really important. And when I hear all of the ideas that you guys came up with and just see you participating all throughout the year, you know, it just gives me hope. And I think hope is, it's scarce these days. And you guys really have shown what the next generation can really do. And I think that's, that's great, I'm glad. I hope you are always interested in local government. As we've just said, that's the best place, that's the best government, the local government, right? Yes, the best. All right, and so if you guys could give a round of applause to your advisors. Also, give a round of applause to June Fraser, our city clerk, because she also was so integral to the organization of all of our tours and provided the snacks. Go ahead, yeah. All right.
And thank you, Mayor. Mayor. And thank you for everything that you've done in the past years for all of this and continuing it. You've had, it's been, it's been great. All of the kids have just learned so much. They've been really good kids. You've been a great mentor to them, so thank you for everything you've done for them, and thank you for everything you've done.
Okay, so now, you've been very heavy, but you know, we hold them and take pictures. Oh, you just stand by them. That works too? There, it's coming here. Okay. And there, and then, there. Because they're very heavy.
They're clear and not so bad.
Oh. Great, David. Okay, I'm gonna let you guys take these. Can I make, can I make one comment? Michelle? Michelle? If anybody else wants to make comments or ask any of these guys questions, you know, we have extra time if you'd like.
Since we have time, and so many of you brought it up, you know, one of the things that I think anybody who's ever done anything struggles with is communication and getting the word out. And so I know we shared with you that you can follow Clayton on Facebook, but I wonder how many of you are on Facebook? Right, not, so I didn't think so.
Okay.
So I'm just saying, it's, you know. So I'm curious, like what, once you started to pay attention to city government, did you notice things anywhere, like signs or anything else as you would go about your daily life? Or there are other things, what other ways might you recommend that we consider to get the word out about events or issues? We're always trying to figure this out, so I don't really expect you to have like a magic bullet, but I'm curious, like, what you.
Yeah, Henry?
I will say, since I was, came and sat in the Board of Aldermen meetings, I started noticing some of the, like, larger events, like signs for the Dibbed Dead and Halloween events, for the, was it the Music Park Festival events, stuff like that. Just, I started seeing the, like, signs more. And I think there was a really good job putting them, like, by the corner, the statue, and up by, like, the plaza and Shaw. Getting them in very, like, high-traffic areas was good, but honestly, I think they could just, more of them. As good as social media is and as good as, as digital, or writing the word, I think there really is something to be said as just, like, signs in people's faces a little bit. So I think that is one thing, just like, one or two extra, like, high-foot traffic, high-car traffic areas might draw even a few more people and get them.
Thank you.
Specifically for high schoolers or kids who are required to take classes. So I don't know if it would be possible for you to connect with them, but if you were able to come in for a day and teach a lesson about what you guys do, I think that would be a pretty great way.
Great idea.
That's awesome.
Yes, and maybe we could just disseminate information through that classroom as well, you know, what's going on in Clayton. Yeah, great.
Thanks so much.
Anybody else have any comments or questions for these guys?
What about, I mean, just in terms of getting communication out, you know, the city sends out a Friday email that talks about events. Like, I mean, would you guys subscribe to that? Would you think it would be something you would read? I'm just curious how effective, like, emails are. Right? Yeah. Right? Instagram, yeah, I mean, Instagram is probably the best. Yeah, yep. Thanks.
Most high schools have, like, I have like five thousand emails.
Right, yeah.
I always, I get emails every day from my teachers, so.
Right.
I think most people are kind of do set styles.
Yeah.
Our brain around mine is probably some of the better than just like a page-long email.
Right, yeah.
I was gonna ask to follow up, you know, I think we all rely so much on email now and other kinds of social media to, to communicate. And I still think the best means of communication is what we're doing right here. We're all together in the same room, and we're all talking to each other. And I know we have, I think, a meeting coming up with the school board, the Board of Aldermen and the school board. And, you know, we are two totally separate bodies, and, you know, to some extent, we try to stay out of each other's business. But in many ways, we are what Clayton's about, city government and the school districts, why people live here. So I'm curious whether you think, just in terms of some live opportunity, I think it's great, this notion, if you have a local government class for people to come talk to you, but that still leaves the vast amount of the population at the school district are not in that class. So, so any ideas you have, and this is probably shows my age, but, you know, if you had like a, an event and you invited everyone from the, from the school to attend in the auditorium and hear from members of the school, from the Board of Edu, from the Board of Aldermen, what we do, you know, we'd like to think that everybody would be excited to come to hear that. And many of people would go, hey, that's boring. Why would I do that? So I just wonder about, any thought about sort of a broader opportunity for us to sort of get with a lot of students and at least explain what we do? Because then maybe you'd be more interested in what we do. Yes?
I think that, especially with some younger kids, because if high schoolers are getting more and older, like, possibly way to get to Clayton. So generally, learning more on our own might be good, you know, and I, I don't know how it's different now with high. Information and presentations and, and stuff. Something like that, at like the older elementary schoolers and the middle school and the Wydown and all that, would be a good time to really get, to explain the kind of premise of local government to these kids when they're old enough to understand, but young enough to. I don't want to sound. Young enough to not be bored, maybe. And also, for those kind of younger groups, and even for some high schoolers, it might be good to, like, not explain the function of, like, the Board of Aldermen and subcommittees, but also to point to, like, direct, like, projects you worked on, like the new park coming up down by, like, the close offices and stuff, and like, what is changing the community now because of the work we do would be potentially a way to get more younger, more interested from like a face-to-face kind of.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Very good. It's nice that we had a little extra time to have. All right, so we still have a presentation.
Hello, I'm Ben Koster. I'm a senior at Clayton High School, and next year, I plan on attending Wash U to study mechanical engineering.
And then I'm Baron Boric. I'm also a senior, and I'm most likely attending the University of Wisconsin at Madison to study biochemistry. And we are both part of the Plan Commission and Architectural Review Board Committee.
So as Baron said, we were both part of the Plan Commission. I really loved it to see how you guys worked through these processes of defined details of housing. And I, I thought what was most interesting was the amount of time you took thinking about runoff and water and things like that. I was here for a meeting when you guys were talking about the new development on Wash U campus that's moving into that area, that Concordio area. And so many people were concerned about runoff and just the way you guys handled it and talked about, talked through with it, all the people that were here, I thought was really amazing. So it just really felt like Clayton community was set well, and yeah.
Yeah, so I thought it was super fascinating, like, the Architectural Review Board and also Plan Commission too. I mean, I think there's definitely some overlap, but the differences were really cool. Like, especially for the Architecture Review Board, there's so many tedious details and, you know, things that they consider that get flagged that I just would never even guess would be, you know, something that people pay attention to. And I just thought that it was something that, I don't know, it was just something new to learn. And even some of those meetings would get pretty intense, which was really, really funny to see. So, yeah, I think, I think it was, I think it was really interesting. And then for the Plan Commission part, hearing about the Clayton Tomorrow 2040 Plan was super cool. And I think that, you know, thinking that far ahead and just all the future plan that we have for the city was just so cool. Like, we saw some graphs about, like, height density in the city and all this data that, like, I couldn't imagine how they compiled and put it, you know, for display, and I thought it was just, just super cool. So, yeah, I thought, I thought our committee was, you know, very cool in particular.
So at the beginning of the year, I heard about, like, this meeting or whatever, and I had to, like, come bring an idea. And I've always been passionate about, like, solar panels and things like that. And I heard that you changed that zoning code about solar panels facing out to the street or whatever. And I'm sure you guys know a lot about solar panels, things like that. And solar panels usually to be optimized have to face south. So for a lot of houses, including our house, that wasn't possible because of the code. So that was what I originally wanted to talk about, but we're still trying to stick to that topic as we're both really interested in STEM and sustainable solutions. So that kind of transitions into what Baron's gonna talk about.
Yeah, so then on to that, kind of a perspective or concept that we have, we've been building on throughout the year. As Ben said, is kind of just integrating more solar energy into Clayton, like, in and around. And, yeah, I think we just believe it's, it's a gift that we can figure out a way to take just all this energy from the sun and turn it into things we can use for our everyday, you know, activities that makes, makes it clean and so, you know, help us in the future. And so, kind of when we were presented the Clayton Tomorrow 2040 Plan, we thought that, you know, there's a lot of things there that kind of could really use that solar energy implementation. And so, like, some of the examples we had first was, kind of, I think that a lot of people agree in Clayton about how, you know, we need more clean energy, but it's also not the easiest thing to kind of implement. And some, you know, it's hard to learn about how, the process and how to, you know, install solar panels, for example. So at Clayton, part with like a company who kind of makes that accessible and easy and affordable for people who, you know, want to make the transition but don't really have the time or, you know, have the knowledge to really know what I need to be doing to switch to clean energy. Because, I mean, personally, I think it's, it's not, you know, it's really not an easy process. But, and kind of how this can really help Clayton, besides the fact that, you know, we use clean energy is, I think some of the ways we can buffer problems that we've had with, like, power outages. Living Clayton my whole life, I think there's definitely been times where some of those power outages we've had can take a whole night or even, you know, a whole day to get back, and it kind of just disrupts the equilibrium that people have and kind of just the flow of everything in the city. So I think that can be just one way to, you know, buffer out the problems and serve as protection to things while also maintaining some sustainability and being clean, so.
Yeah, so along with, like, a residential solar program, we have a lot of big commercial buildings in downtown Clayton. And a few years ago, I worked on this project talking about solar windows, which, I don't know if you know, those exist, but it's pretty much a solar panel that is as effective as a solar panel, but a window. So I did this project specifically looking at that all-glass Centene building. I don't know if you're familiar with it, but pretty much, if, if, if one were to cover the entire side of that building, the south-facing side with solar windows, they would have a seventeen, they would only need seventeen percent of their energy from the grid. And they pay off those solar panels in five years. So an idea would be, so how can we, how can we make that happen? I was thinking, I don't know if it's possible, but like a subsidized property tax if you're going solar, green energy. And I, as Baron was saying, I think that fits with the Clayton Tomorrow 2024, or 2040. So I, I think having, having the use of solar windows and maybe subsidizing some property tax to let, let that happen. I don't know if that's possible, but definitely think that could be a great idea. Just in general, we wanted to thank all you guys, especially people in our commission, for allowing us to come learn and hear how Clayton works. It was, it was a really fun opportunity. And also wanted to thank, like, all the people that, when we went on our site visits, allowing us to come in and things like that.
Yeah, and then finally, we also wanted to thank our Mayor's Youth Advisory Council Advisors, Ms. Abelies, Ms. Keerly, and then Mayor Harris as well. Of course, for all the work you guys do in keeping this organized and such a fascinating opportunity we have to be out here and see how everything works. So thank you, guys.
Yeah, thank you.
We'll take each one individually, okay? And then, so. Uncle Far, Ben. Okay, here we go. Over here.
Over here.
Yeah, yeah. Okay, and so we have one last thing to award, which is each, each year, we, among all these, all the certificates that we give out, we, we like to give out a mayor's award for the, some, someone on the Maya Council that has done sort of over and above, has participated really consistently and shown a lot of energy and engagement at every meeting and at the tours that we have and also within their committee that they worked with. And so this year's, this year's mayor's award will go to Ben Koster. Now, we have a little glitch, Ben, isn't it? We don't have the award. Well, we're getting it. It's gonna come, but we just didn't get it done in time, so we'll shake. So you guys, we are gonna take a quick break and then go into our seven o'clock, which will be very, very short because it's election night. And so I'm gonna say thank you, thank you, thank you to all of your participation. It really was so enriching for all of us grownups who participated. And we hope that you carry it with you and use it again, use it somewhere someday toward your own local government, wherever you end up. So, thank you. Oh, that would be great. Let's get a picture with the whole group, yes.
More closely with the school just. Kids in the school would have a better appreciation if the local government get more people interested. These kids, because they did this program, it sounded really worthwhile, but most kids don't know what local government does, and they don't get it. There's not enough of an effort to sort of give them that opportunity. We were able to have a little give and take because we got done.
How's things going? It's a big day. Busy day.
Started at five o'clock this morning, so, yes. I, you know, it's, I tell people it is energizing and exhausting. It's a series of contradictions. You know, it's, every time you see somebody where it feels like their message resonated and they, they connected with you. And then publicly tell them, like you said, I don't connect with everybody. And so there are some people that, they just have a strong alliance to bridge it, or whatever the reasons are. And so, and so then, in terms of, you know, I, I just think, I think this is gonna be really hard. So I just, it's like riding waves. There's press, there's, anyway.
Do you get any sense of turnout to them?
Yeah, so, um, the, yes, so that, for the election website, it has turnout in every voting precinct throughout the county. And so I looked at the four o'clock voter turnout at the library, gun bridge, Wydown and also the Pikeville, edited, well, it's something about eighteen hundred of those, so. However, we know that that's just people that have voted. They're not necessarily clink voters. And a lot of those are worried our voters are involved.
Different than yesterday.
Exactly. So at this point, you don't know what's there for the clink voters. They don't give you that. So we'll get the early vote at seven, but I suspect the even castles, so I will pick my seven.
So, do you have any sense of how many we typically get?
So the stats are that we have fewer registered voters actually than we did. So, but then, when she did run opposed with Harold and.
Alex?
Alex, I think there were. So just to get an idea. So, so, so here's, you know, when we have a contested race, I would think we have twenty percent turnout, that would be seventeen hundred voters. That would be representative of its history. And, you know, when I see the kind of activity we've had through the day, I talked to people in the polls, and several, many of them were not clink voters. And so it's like, oh, so I don't know how to get a feel for that. So, I don't know. So, so anyway, I'm, I'm thinking that the winner of the race, we've got to get by the house.
Wonder what we had in 2021 when we had the tax increase? Of course, that was COVID also, so. I was just curious, because there at least, you've got something that's controversial, and you think people will turn out more so than they will on anything else because they care more about that taxes than anything else. and you think people will turn out more so than they will on anything else because they care more about that taxes than anything else.
I wonder. I think I have that on my computer at home.
He has his daughters. He has some daughter. He is an event for her, his daughter. Um, are we, are we on?
Okay.
Okay, well, welcome to our seven o'clock meeting for April eighth, Election Day in Clayton. Um, we have a very short agenda, but for now, we will start with calling the roll.
Alderwoman McAndrew, here.
Alderma- Alderwoman Buse, here.
Alderwoman Patel.
Here.
Alderman Fader.
Here.
Alderman Hummel.
Here.
Alderman Yorg. Mayor Harris.
Here.
City Manager Gibson.
Here.
City Attorney O'Keefe.
Here.
Thank you.
Okay, next on the agenda would be public requests and petitions. So if there's anybody in our audience or online that wants to talk to us about something not on our agenda tonight, now's your chance. Any online? Nobody's online. Nobody's online. So um, I want you guys to know, so now we, we always have great turnout like this. People love to come to our meetings. Uh, all right. So next we have the consent agenda. Does anybody want to discuss anything that was in that, our minutes and whatever? No comment, no question? All right. Um, Alderwoman McAndrew.
I'll move to approve the consent agenda. Second.
Any discussion?
Alderwoman McAndrew.
Aye.
Alderwoman Buse.
Aye.
Alderwoman Patel.
Aye.
Alderman Fader.
Aye.
Alderman Hummel.
Aye.
Mayor Harris.
Aye.
Okay, the next and only thing on our agenda tonight is the deed restrictions on uh, the Calaris property. And so I know we have some guests here that are very interested in this and um, I might just ask, I know where you're gonna report, but I might just ask if um, you all would introduce yourselves for people, those members of our board who have never met the Opera Theater team and also the team from Calaris. Do you mind just stand up, shout out? Or you don't have to come up. Just to, just so they know. Okay, very good. And Opera Theater. Okay, very good. Thank you guys for doing that. All right. And Mr. City Manager, do you have a report?
Uh, yes. So tonight we are talking about the Brown Shoe, the former Brown Shoe Company headquarters, which is now Calaris. Uh, it was constructed on the property back um, in nineteen fifty-one. Uh, that property was actually acquired from the city of Clayton. So the city previously owned it. This is eighty-three hundred and eighty-four hundred Maryland Avenue. Um, so the uh, um, the campus was constructed there on the property, uh, but there were a number of deed restrictions that were put in place uh, by the city at the time of sale. The property at eighty-four hundred was actually uh, sold in two thousand to Campbell Taggart uh, Incorporated. And at that point in time, there were a number of restrictions that were released uh, to facilitate that transaction. So uh, here tonight, uh, you just met the teams from both Opera Theater St. Louis and Calaris. Uh, we do have a pending transaction and they have requested that the remaining restrictions on the property at eighty-three hundred Maryland uh, be released, uh, similar to those at eighty-four hundred that were previously released uh, twenty-five years ago. So there are eight remaining restrictions. Staff has reviewed all of the restrictions uh, from nineteen fifty-one. We don't find that any of those releasing any of those would cause any harm uh, to the community in any way. Uh, many of these are outdated and, and would no longer apply uh, with future development on the property. Uh, two really worth pointing out here is a restriction from the sale of alcohol in the property, uh, which would be um, uh, a heavy burden for Opera Theater St. Louis, uh, especially in a performance facility. Uh, and so the, the other one that I would point out on here uh, is number seven, which uh, basically says that the city can go in uh, if we were ever to widen Topton Way or Gay Avenue and take twenty feet of property for that particular purpose without compensation. Uh, again, this was in nineteen fifty-one, so I imagine since that time, that roadway has already been expanded. We don't have any plans to do anything like that. Uh, and if Topton or Gay were to be expanded in the future, it would probably be as a result of development on the adjacent property, the, the actual Calaris site. And that's something we would require anyhow. So um, I don't see any reason that we would keep these restrictions in place. And therefore, staff recommends that the Board of Aldermen approve the ordinance uh, releasing the deed restrictions.
Thank you. Um, any comments or questions from the board? We'll just go in order.
No comments.
I just want to clarify the topic related to the um, potential widening of the roadway. Um, so, because what I'm, I'm just thinking about the fact that I imagine or hope we'll have a lot of traffic around the site because people will be coming for Opera Theater and whatever other exciting things might be happening there. So can you um, clarify when you, the end of your statement, David, you talked about um, like as we learn more about the development and like have, there would likely be traffic studies for a development of this sort.
We will require a traffic study.
Yeah.
Uh, for this.
And so um, based on that, would the cities still have the option to adjust the roadway to accommodate what might be needed? Like, we'd have the ability to do that if or how does that?
So if the traffic study requires improvements to be made to keep adequate traffic flow, uh, then we are going to require that the developer actually pay to make those improvements uh, in order to, to keep traffic levels where they should be.
Yeah.
Oh, my statement is that I don't see any situation where the city on our own would want to widen that either Topton or Gay and go in and, and make that improvement ourselves and, and utilize that twenty feet. So any expansion would be related to a development. If that were the case, we would require the developer to pay for those improvements. So I, I don't, I can't envision a scenario.
It doesn't preclude our ability to require that should the development and subsequent study deem it necessary.
That's correct.
Great. Asked and answered. Thank you.
Okay, anything over here? Questions, comments?
I think this is gonna be the shortest meeting uh, since I've been on the board, but even though I'd be tempted to filibuster, I won't. Um, the one thing I found most interesting is I never knew that the city of Clayton owned this property previously. So that was a big revelation for me. Uh, but in any event, I think this is an extremely exciting project and wish Calaris and Opera Theater all the best. We love to see all this work and so obviously like to do anything we can to accommodate the project. So I'm certainly supportive. Thanks.
Thank you, yeah. Hey, Rick.
Um, I'm supportive as well. Uh, and I don't know that I have really any other substantive questions. I guess the only thing that I'm wondering um, is we're being asked to release this before um, the sale actually takes place. Um, so is there, would there be any benefit to us of somehow making it a conditional release um, that the sale must go through? Or I, I guess really what I'm wondering is, is are we really conceding anything of, of substance, um, even if the sale doesn't go through?
I don't believe so. The only thing of substance that we'd be releasing is the ability to get twenty feet without compensating uh, the property owner for it. But again, I, I don't envision any scenario where we would want twenty feet to expand either Topton or Gay.
Okay, I don't have any other questions. Thank you.
Very good. All right, Alderwoman McAndrew.
I'll introduce Bill Number Seven Zero Six Seven, approving the release of deed restrictions for eighty-three hundred and eighty-four hundred Maryland Avenue to be read for the first time by title only. Second.
Any discussion? Okay, Mr. City Attorney.
Bill Number Seven Zero Six Seven, first reading, an ordinance to release deed restrictions for the properties addressed as eight-three-zero-zero and eight-four-zero-zero Maryland Avenue.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Okay.
I'll move that the board give unanimous consent consideration for adoption of Bill Number Seven Zero Six Seven on, on the day of its introduction.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, let the minutes reflect. The board is giving unanimous consent.
I'll introduce Bill Number Seven Zero Six Seven, approving the release of deed restrictions for eighty-three hundred and eighty-four hundred Maryland Avenue to be read for the second time by title only.
Second. Any discussion? Mr. City Attorney.
Bill Number Seven Zero Six Seven, second reading in consideration for adoption. An ordinance to release deed restrictions for the properties addressed as eight-three-zero-zero and eight-four-zero-zero Maryland Avenue.
Alderwoman McAndrew.
Aye.
Alderwoman Buse.
Aye.
Alderwoman Patel.
Aye.
Alderman Fader.
Aye.
Alderman Hummel.
Aye.
Mayor Harris.
Aye.
Thank you.
That's a wrap, okay? The, the restrictions are released. So you guys, we are so excited about what is yet to come. And um, you know, what are we can do to help you? We're, you know, willing to try. So anyway, thank you. And now is your chance to escape. Yeah. You're welcome. You're welcome.
Thank you.
Uh, okay, that concludes our meeting. And I think because of it being election night, we might forego a roundtable. Um, even though this is the second to last roundtable all over hell.
Just wait till the next one.
I think I know what you've been doing. So, you know, hey. All right, you guys, um, let's all go and uh, watch the website for the rest of the night.
Watch the results come in.
I, I know, I know. I'm gonna have a motion. I just
Mayor, if I could quickly, I do want to acknowledge, uh, we lost a city employee this week.
Oh, of course.
Unexpectedly, Kathy Brooks Manis in our fire department uh, passed away over the weekend. And uh, it's a, it's a pretty tough loss for us. She was here nearly forty years and served on our non-uniform pension board uh, for almost twenty-five. So um, a very, very active employee. Everybody here knew Kathy very, very well. We're all gonna miss her. Um, is certainly a big boy in both uh, in the personality that we've lost uh, and operationally within our fire department. She was incredibly uh, central to everything they do. So uh, I do want to mention that her services are on uh, this weekend, on Saturday. And so um, to her family and everyone else affected by it, we're certainly thanking them. So I just wanted to make mention of it.
Thank you, David. I'm sorry that I did not mention that right off the bat. Yeah.
And I just want to echo that sentiment. So Kathy had worked on the non-uniform board with me. And so together for probably twenty-five years, we've worked together on this all the time. And she was looking forward to her retirement and the fact that she was looking after this fund for so long and um, wasn't able to take advantage of it is a sad thing. So um, it's a sad day for lots of reasons.
Yes, yes. Okay, so on that sad note, we'll take a motion to adjourn.
A motion to adjourn. Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Right, you guys.